All right, if y'all will, let's stand, say the prayers and get the meeting going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we could get in a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, James. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Randy, yes. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? None. Any announcements?
Okay, um, I would like to say that me and Mr. Melchek and Blake from the Mayor Fletcher went to West Harrison High School yesterday morning, spent about hour and a half of them in their agriculture class going over, they did a mock, uh, meeting and had some of the kids pretend they was wanting to open up a poultry farm in Mills River, Harris County. And then part of the other kids wanted to propose a slaughterhouse. And so they come before the board in like a special use permit. And he said after it was all said and done, there was more confusion than it was before they started. So he had us come over there and that's a, that's, that's general work. So we went over there, we talked about a lot of stuff. A lot of it didn't even pertain to the poultry or the slaughterhouse, but we, we had a lot of fun and enjoyed it.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, public comment. Got a list to come. Thank you, Mr. Plaid. Uh, Mr. Post.
Okay, I want to take with just a minute, I'm Jim Post, of course, y'all all know I live in Mills River. I have a question for the council and people have asked me, I don't know, at the times about the significance, historical significance of the chimney out here. I was scanning over the minutes from last time and I know we're talking about moving the butterfly garden to there. So I was wondering if we could investigate. Somebody told me there is a significant history to that chimney. If there is, we ought to find out and put a little plaque up. That's just my suggestion. Well, I think it would just add to the ambiance, if you will, of the park. Thank you.
Okay, I will tell you what I remember as to where it came from. It come from Fern Cliff, over there in the woods. It was, uh, who was raised at that site? I cannot remember the name. You said? He was.
It was his family's.
Family's, yes. So he donated the chimney. Yep, and the theory was Roger was going, was going to take a trailer over there and try to lean it over in one piece, bring it back over and stand it up. We go over and we look at it and said, no, that's not, that is not going to work. So we had to, uh, get someone to disassemble it, bring it back and reassemble it here to save it, to preserve it. That's the gist of the story. Now, I'm sure Roger, if you could get him stopped for five minutes, he could get you clued in exactly on all of it. But that's what I remember. So do you remember anymore?
Only that it's from the eighteen hundreds.
Right, okay. Okay, I've got Laura Moore.
Good evening. I'm just going to take a minute of your time as well, not very long, but good evening, Mayor Gons and Town Council. I'm Laura Moore and I'm a member of the Parks Advisory Board. I just want to take a minute to say thank you for your continued support of the vision for Mills River Park. I think you've been made aware that the Mills River Park Universal Place Space Project was recently awarded two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in grant funding. This is huge. This wouldn't have been possible without, of course, Nicole's attention to detail and determination, but also for your support. So for that, I want to personally thank you. Um, I'm now looking forward to the completion of this project. And as I told our board, our park will not only be the talk of the town, but the talk of many towns. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. With that being said, we do want to hand out a, a big thank you for all you do. That worked out great. Sure did. We'll keep our eyes rolling forward and see if we can find some more. Okay, consent agenda, uh, motion to approve it as well?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have two comments. Um, they are regarding the farm market. Do you want me to hold them?
If, if it doesn't bother the ones that's here, I'd just like to hear them all at one time, if that's okay?
Okay.
We'll just take turn about and hear what you got to say, okay? So we'll move on with the consent agenda approval.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. Second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor? Uh, all right. Any opposed? None. Okay, on to the regular agenda, Mills River Farmers Market permanent location.
Mayor and council, this is a discussion topic you've had for some time now. And as your last meeting, uh, Councilwoman Good asked that we place this on the agenda. Town recently acquired property next door to the park. And I think there's interest from the, one other thing from the farm market, uh, about potentially placing a permanent location over there. So, um, I think we have some folks from the farm market here tonight who'd like to speak on that, to speak on that matter. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to you, Sandra, in case there's anything you want to add to kind of introduce this topic.
Well, the farmer's market has been trying to find a place for a permanent home. They've bounced around from several locations. And when we had a chance to obtain this property again, um, I mentioned then and hoped that it would be a good fit for the farmers. And I met with Daniel and Nicole and Joe and Linda, and we did walk the property and look at it. And Nicole had said that they have hopes for maybe a maintenance shed up there also. And I think there's plenty of room for both of those that could tie together. And I think that with what the farmer's market has in mind, that it would be a good fit for further use for the park, for additional parking, which tonight we can obviously see is needed. And let's hear from the farmer's market.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, first off, I'd like to start out and thank the council and the mayor for letting us, you know, giving us the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I appreciate, um, the friends of the Mills River Farm Market who have come to show their support. Thank you all. I also want to thank the town of Mills River, the council of two thousand and nine. We would not, the market would not exist without them. So we were, we were a vision bears. We've had help from a couple of town councils in the past, as well as the ones for help from y'all on our salaries, the ARPA funds and our double SNAP. We really appreciate that. And of course, we're asking for a little more help. We'd like to get a permanent location. We've gone through this before with our, we're outgrowing the school. The school's been great. We love it, but we've reached the point, we need a little more room to expand. And then plus, as Sandra and Daniel know, we're hauling the trailers and they've helped us the last two years with my health problems. I was having trouble doing it and we really appreciate that so much. But if we could get a permanent location, that would just help the community grow, be more of a community center, help the market grow, which in turn will help the town.
All right, as, um, Linda Britton, and again, thanks for letting us speak today. As the market moves into its fifteenth season, we'd like to extend our deepest gratitude for your generous support. And we truly could not have reached this point without the Town Council of Mills River. Throughout these fifteen years, the market has grown and we have moved around several times. And just like the county of Mills River, you're growing too. As our town continues to grow, our customer base expands. And we're seeing more and more local vendors that are showing interest in participating at the farmer's market as well. It is becoming more common for farmers to tend smaller acreages while making a profit. Uh, there are only a few local farmers, you know, working large tracts of land, even in Henderson County. But there are many growers using small plots of a few acres. And there are even some market gardeners who are able to do this on less than an acre. And this trend is proving to be true for most of western North Carolina. So we need space for these, uh, to offer these growers as a place to sell their products. The Mills River Farm Market definitely has an impact on the local economy. All the dollars spent at the market go into the pockets of those local growers and producers. And they in turn spend those dollars to produce more products to sell. During the twenty twenty-three season, that amount in SNAP sales alone represented over twenty thousand dollars. Now, the ability to offer those matching dollars for SNAP makes a huge difference in the lives of our community members that are suffering hardship. And we do thank the Town Council for your financial support for that very special program. Now add that to the regular debit and credit card sales and the total jumps up to nearly fifty thousand dollars for our local growers. And then you add in the cash sales, which the vendors estimate are more like two-thirds of what they bring in. And that pushes the total up to around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into our vendors' pockets. And that does strengthen this local economy. Our educational programs also make a positive impact on the lives of our community members. The demonstration kitchen helps adults learn how to eat fresh and in-season foods, teaches new cooking techniques, ways to improve their health. Our Kids Zone introduces children to the world of fresh foods and gardening, farms, and how much fun all this can be, which we hope is going to plant a seed and help them make healthy choices in the future. And your financial support for those programs in twenty twenty-two and this year for twenty twenty-three is greatly appreciated. Nonprofit agencies are invited to participate in the market throughout the season, passing down information on the programs that they offer. And many times they are able to offer health screenings, nutrition information, taste tests, assist with the Kids Zone activities. Having them present at the market gives community members the opportunity to learn about programs in the area that can help them in their daily lives. So we are asking the town of Mills River to allow us to use space on the recently purchased property as a location for the Mills River Farm Market. We are looking for a parking lot, large enough to accommodate roughly fifty vendors. That's how far we hope to grow. Right now, we are running close to thirty vendors a day. We don't really want to get much bigger than fifty because that tends to lose that community feel, which we're striving to have. And a minimum of seventy-five vehicles for shoppers. We would appreciate having access to water, but an outdoor water hydrant is sufficient. And an electrical source for our musicians, one vendor and the information booth. Restroom facilities are needed, but a handicap portable toilet works just fine and that can be paid for with market funds. A storage facility for the market supplies and materials would be needed on site. But again, the Mills River Farmer's Market is able to purchase that. Most of the infrastructure of the market, as Joe mentioned, is located on a trailer that's parked in our yard. And the demonstration kitchen is also stored on our property. And we all know that life can change at any moment. And when this happens, you know, someone moves or whatever, the market would struggle. Having a dedicated space would make it so that as employees and volunteers come and go, the market is going to remain strong. We ask that this space be made available to the Mills River Farm Market with some type of long-term contractual agreement. The farmer's market would need the use of the space on Saturdays, May through October, with the possibility of some extra days needed for holiday markets or some special gathering for the benefit of the community, which would be less than fifty days for the year. The market area would add much-needed parking space for the use of the town of Mills River during the off-market season, as well as during the week when we're not using it on Saturdays, or during the week even when we're using it on Saturday. So that would be roughly three hundred and twenty days a year, uh, you know, three hundred days a year that you would have access without complications from the market. This arrangement will benefit the market immensely, but it will also benefit the town of Mills River. You know, for years, I mean, Joe and I have been with the market since its inception and shoppers have asked us constantly, have you ever thought about putting the market down at the park? I mean, we hear this every week. And until now, we've said no, because of the situation you see out here tonight. When the park is in use, there's not room for us. The community has felt for a long time that the market would be a good fit at the park. And providing a space for the Mills River Farm Market would make a statement to the citizens of the town that you are supporters of local agriculture in actions, as well as in your words. The citizens of the town of Mills River have repeatedly spoken out to keep focus on agriculture, as noted in surveys and in the comprehensive plans that the town has done. Towns generally benefit by having a good relationship with the local farm market. Visit any large city around the United States and one of the most sought-after destinations is that local farmer's market. You can go to any big town, Charleston, Seattle, anywhere. And visitors want to know, where is that farmer's market? Our market is already becoming a community destination. So let's take it one step closer by making this new property our home. Thank you.
Okay, if anyone would, would like to speak, uh, how many have we got that wants to speak on this behalf? Just one? We had some more signed up? Okay, okay. So if you will, we've got a pretty big agenda, but if you'll come up, we'll give you at least three minutes. And if you're running pretty close, just keep a dig.
I'm Betsy Campbell and I'm a patron of the farmer's market. But I was, when they were talking about planning this, I was wondering if we could put, if it'd be enough space that we could put some community gardens for folks to use. So that was one of the thoughts on my mind that might be included in that.
We just have to think about it.
Okay.
You know, just have to think about it. Uh, who else has got on your list? Did you get her name too, Sue? Okay, thank you.
Uh, I received an email from Tom and Irma Allison. Uh, it says, we do need a permanent location and the park area would offer easy access and visibility. It would be an asset to the community. Uh, of the heading was farmer's market.
Okay.
Um, other one is from Lisa Lob. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. She's a Glens of Aberdeen resident. Um, dear Town Council members, I'm writing this in support of the Mills River Farm Market to be relocated to the Mills River Park. I frequent the market and every single one of the vendors work very hard to provide us with the best homegrown produce and other specialties. I miss it during the winter months and think that relocating to the Mills River Park would be a great benefit to the market vendors, the community, and let's not forget the park itself. I've been very impressed with the improvements made to the park and would love to see more events or happenings take place. The market would be a great addition. I think having the market there would also give a sense of a town center or the place to go in Mills River when looking for something to do. So I guess by now you have figured out I'm very much in support of the market coming to the park. Truly appreciate your consideration and hope it will happen. Thank you, members, for all you do to make our community a very special place to live.
Thanks, Sue. So anyone else want to get up and speak before I ask a few questions? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Cole. Um, I'm a local farmer. Um, I'm a vendor at the Mills River Farmer's Market and we just started last year. Um, our farm has been operational for about fifty years. Um, but we started last year with the Mills River Farmer's Market and it's been a real blessing for our farm. Um, and I just wanted to speak as a young farmer that it's very challenging in this particular day and age to maintain your farm, to keep it a farm. Um, my husband and I are committed to keeping our family land and farming. Um, but the Mills River Farmer's Market has created, um, a better way for us to do that. Um, and also to build community. Um, I also wanted to speak as a parent of two kids, um, who help at the market. Um, one in the, um, loves to help out in the demo kitchen and the other, um, helps me at the booth. Um, that it is, I've seen tremendous growth from them and from the kids that come. And so I, I love to have kids come to our booth and to teach them a little bit, um, about what we do. And it's a real community builder. Um, also, I think as, just speaking as a mom, going on Saturday morning to the park with my kids and being able to go to home with fresh produce or flowers or baked goods or things like that. Um, not only is that an opportunity, would that be an opportunity for me to teach my kids about community, about small business, about agriculture, all of those important things? Um, but it also, it's, it just sounds tremendously fun. Um, so I just think that that's, it's a real win-win.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Reed?
Jim Reed, Mr. Gons, thank you for having us here. I, I don't want to color outside the lines, but would it be okay for me to ask the folks that are here tonight in support of the Mills River Farmer's Market to please stand up?
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Good, great idea. Okay, Joe and Linda, if you'll step up, I know I've got a few questions. Uh, maybe some of the other councils got a few. Anybody want to start before I take off? I mean, it's nothing major. With the, i- if we did this and we, there's trailers over here, the kitchen and the supply trailer. Will that need to be in a fenced-in secure lot, or do you think it's secure enough over there?
Well, that's where the, the, the farmer's market would be interested in purchasing a secure storage. And we're thinking about a shipping container, because I think that's about the most secure thing that we could get. And we could put on it whatever needs to be done to match any of the regulations. As far as the town, I don't know if it needed to be sited or whatever. I know there's regulations with the facades. We can definitely do any of that. We could lock all of our materials up in there and totally eliminate the trailer going back and forth. As far as the demonstration kitchen, we were hoping.
Is it on an open trailer now, or how is?
No, it's, it's a pop-up camper. So we could, we could lower it, we could actually take, we don't have, I mean, we've got a lot in it, but it's all in boxes. We could actually have it close enough to the storage facility. We could just set everything in the lock facility or try to secure it.
And, and what we had thought we would do if, when we got a permanent spot would be basically to block it up. And, uh, we've had a hitch lock for a long time. But if we blocked it up, then it wouldn't be able to be drug away anywhere.
Right. Okay, who else got some question?
What impact does the market have on the young entrepreneurs?
Oh, the young entrepreneurs. I didn't even mention that. Our Young Entrepreneurs Program is, uh, something that we came up with a few years ago where we offer school-aged children from kindergarten through high school the opportunity to sell at the market. And they sell free of charge. There are no fees established with that.
We supply canopy tables, uh, somebody to mentor them, you know, help, to help them learn to run a business, help them learn to how a market operates.
Right. And this year, our fingers are crossed, we've applied for a grant to make a more advanced Young Entrepreneurs Program that the kids can apply to. And we will offer training in, uh, not only like record-keeping and basic business management, but also, I don't want to call it etiquette, but there's a class that I've talked with the lady who runs it in Asheville. And it's where you learn how to present yourself and how to talk to the public.
Yeah, how to deal with people.
And how to meet people and so forth. And it's strictly for kids. So, uh, we would hope to do that and, uh, be able to offer them more equipment that they would be able to keep through the years and not just be borrowing from us. So hopefully it's really helping them to grow their business.
Is there an age group that you start with, seven, eight up, or?
Just school-age kids. The youngest that we've had has been probably eight.
Hey, yeah, maybe nine.
And we've got this one young fellow that's been selling with us for several years and he, he's in middle school now. We've got a, a young lady who's moving into high school that's been selling with us for a while. We had a high school girl that had sold for like three or four years. So, um, it's a great little program and we'd like to see the advanced version.
Okay.
Get funded. Fingers are crossed for that grant.
Have you had any young entrepreneurs go on to become market vendors?
Not yet, because the program's not been in place long enough for them to have moved into the adult stage.
She sold a little last year.
That's true. We did, we did have a young lady. She was an artist, Rainey Pfizer. And she sold as a young entrepreneur for a couple of years. And then last year she moved up as an adult vendor. And then she also moved up and actually ran our Kids Zone for the last half of the season, so.
Anyone else? Did you say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through the market in a year? Thirty-ish vendors.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, yeah.
I mean, even the vendors are shocked when they hear that number. But when we look at the credit card totals that we have and the vendors estimate that probably two-thirds of what they got that day was cash sale, not the tokens which they're getting reimbursed for. So that's a pretty good estimate.
If memory serves me right, I believe last year on opening day, we had six hundred people come through.
Almost six fifty.
Almost six fifty.
We averaged over three hundred.
During regular market days, there's usually how many?
Three fifty to four fifty.
Three hundred, yeah, three fifty to four fifty on a regular, regular market day. Yeah. And we only anticipate that to grow because if we can have more space to have more vendors, then we'll have more and more people. I mean, we were amazed at six hundred and fifty last year on opening day, but the, the interest is growing.
Daniel Randolph, do you know how many parking spots is in the lower parking lot?
I do not.
I was sitting here trying to remember what it was. I can't remember. Eight hundred forty-nine, hundred fifty-four? It's okay. It's not, it's not that big a deal. I'm just trying to compare what it would take to put, put over there.
Well, another thing, Mr. Mayor, we could, um, the market is more than willing, once we have, if we can work out some kind of agreement, there are grants available to the market to do things like paving and infrastructure.
We could pursue grants.
We could pursue grant dollars to help offset the town having to spend. Because, you know, but we can't do anything until, you know how this is, we.
You got places you're going to put?
Yeah.
Uh.
We're estimating less than two acres of the three-point, whatever it is over there.
Probably right at two by the time we get setbacks and, you know.
Jeff, Randy? I have no questions.
Uh, I'm curious, is the market married to the Saturday sale date, or have you explored other options, or I'm just curious about that?
At this time, because a lot of our vendors sell at multiple markets throughout the week. And, um, we've got two markets in Henderson County on Saturday, ours and the Hendersonville City Market. Uh, there's a Thursday market and a Wednesday market in Henderson County as well. But, uh, it was started on Saturday, so we just kept it at the same time frame.
Stance, and that is, uh, looking around at different markets, when the market reaches a certain level of activity or busyness, they often respond to your question, Joe, pick up and, and extra a day.
That's right. Yeah, so some markets do split and have two days a week, but we would have to really grow in order to have enough vendors to do that.
Well, you may already be aware, but I would encourage you, if you don't already, the North Collin Goldenleaf Foundation is an excellent source for, uh, and I envision like a vendor shed, you know, a grant application to provide us with, put in a vendor shed and.
That would be a lovely dream, but that's not something we're looking for now. We would like to get the move done and then maybe that would be something in the future because we've traveled, every time we go to a town, we go to see their farmer's market. And, uh, some of them have very nice facilities. And that would not be a bad thing to have, except that it just complicates the layout a little bit.
Well, I, sitting on this side, I just think we don't want to go at this piece of mail. We want. Well, I, sitting on this side, I just think we don't want to go at this piece of mail, we want a comprehensive plan of where we want to be. And so while it may be a phased approach to put in a permanent home, if it's over here or somewhere else in town, but nonetheless, if. If Mills River taxpayers are also a partner in this venture, then I'd like to see. A comprehensive plan of what it's gonna look like, whether that's in a year or ten years and then how we get there, but I would encourage you to go ahead and start. Working those channels and that was just one that I know of before that. Uh, the Golden Leaf has done similar projects in North Carolina to support agriculture and. And so that would make an easier sale to the residents and taxpayers in Mills River that may not be familiar to say that. This is what you're bringing. We understand that you don't generate revenue to come in with sacks full of cash, however. You would be an excellent applicant for somebody in these different grants and that one in particular, that you could. Bring to the table two hundred thousand dollars worth improvements in the, in the form of like a vendor shed or something of that nature and then the residents pick up. The other infrastructure, the parking, the water, electricity, those things.
Yes, and, and also one reason that we hadn't really been pushing the idea of a shed at this point was that we felt like. The town needs additional parking. And by us having just parking lot space, then you're getting all that parking, all those other days of the year. Once a shed goes in, then you've eliminated fifty parking spaces or whatever.
Yeah, shed ideas wonderful, but every time we go, I drool over the nice ones. But then you look at markets that have been in existence for forty years that are still in a parking lot.
Anyway, everything's come in via email and your presentation always says permanent home, permanent home, so. I want, I want to look at what is your permanent home and what would it look like? Would it be a vendor shed? If that's not anything the market wants, I'm not trying to force anything on you, however. You know.
We, we would love it, but like I say, the legit finding the piece of property that we could be devoted or figure out other uses for a shed. When the market wasn't there and, you know, that's, that's a dream, but.
Yeah, and I think our terminology of a permanent home means someplace that we know we're going to be able to be at for ten, twenty. Thirty years and not have a business say, get sold and all right, the new owner doesn't want us there or. The school board decides they don't want us at the school. I mean, like during COVID year, we couldn't be on school property, so. You know, we'd like to have a place that we know we're gonna be and we can be secure.
And not have to, not have to haul tractors.
Okay, anything else? Hearing anything else? I'm glad to see all the community support, I will say that. That's one thing I told the school kids is. Most of the time forty or fifty people are on us about something and about everything. And that's all, we see those forty or fifty, you know, and if. Was trying to encourage them to step up and speak. Even if they think it's not a big concern at this point in time, it's their future, you know, and. I don't know if I got it, but we at least told them.
You plant those seeds.
All right, we're glad to have everybody out here.
Well, can we discuss use for the town would have for that property?
We can, yeah.
Okay, um, the town could definitely use the extra parking, not just tonight, but. When I'm upfeeding the horses and stuff, I look down here and it's constantly full, which is good, that's what we want. It would give a good open common ground up there where people could meet and talk. We don't have a whole lot for. Teenage. People to do and they say they like to hang out in the parking lot and talk. So. Ingles don't want them. They used to hang out at the food line parking lot, they don't want them. You know, that might provide a place for them to hang out and talk. And. There's the food truck, the blood mobile, recycle day. If we have movie in the park, we need more parking and just more parking for the picnic shelter up there where people come. And have gatherings and stuff and still people have room to park to get to the dog park.
Right. What we would have to do is we would have to get an engineer group to look at it with us. And see. You know, develop us some kind of bid platform for it to be bid out to build. You know, we could potentially look at gravel to start with if we went that way. I know if I'm not mistaken, it's been a few years, but I think this parking lot down here was three hundred eighty-nine thousand. Does that sound reasonable?
You're talking about the, the back?
The back one?
That was before I got here, I don't know.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, Randy's saying it was right there, so.
So that's, that's one of my concerns, so. To, to take that three-acre parcel of property over there, put it into. Because we have to kind of match what we've done here in town already, because we've, we've got a lot of money and a lot of investment in town. So it to, to take that parcel over there and put it into a level parking area, something that would suit the farmer's market. Or a parking lot just in general. I mean, Shannon, you're, you know what it costs to move dirt and stuff around, I mean, we're looking at. That's what I'm thinking. And then by the time you run water and electricity over there, I mean. I mean, we spent a half million dollars on, on a two bathrooms, a shed down here for. Four picnic tables. So the cost is what, is what's giving me some heartburn. I would love to, I, I liked Mrs. Britton's ideal about grant money, whenever she said grant. My ears perked right up, yeah. I, I'm really interested, so.
I mean, cut you off, but if there's, there is a. There are engineers, I didn't say, I'm sorry, forget.
There is help available through USDA and NCDIA for engineering studies and things like that. That, you know, like I say, the, kind of waiting to see how we go, but if the market, if we had, we'd come to an agreement. We would be more than happy to start pursuing other avenues to save the town money. You know, it's not like we're just asking you to throw a million dollars out there for us, but we can't do, we cannot seek any funding. Until there's agreement, because we go to them and say, we got this dream, they're gonna say that's wonderful when you have a piece of property cost. Yeah, but I've been doing a little, a little work, a little research and there is money available to help with engineering, with help setting stuff up. You know, I don't, I haven't got dug deep enough to see if there's help, I mean, there's grants for actual construction. But there are avenues in agriculture to the state and the feds will come in and help. Design and do things. So, you know, I don't know what's involved, but.
I'm sure we'll get back into this tomorrow in our vision and, and budget and stuff and discuss, you know, where we're gonna put our monies and. And all, and if we get to that point, we would definitely ask you to step up and try to find us contacts. For any and all of that, you know, if we get to that stage, we're gonna need all the help we can get. Because that'll be a capital project that'll ha- would have to be done pretty much in a year's time. That'll have to come out of our general fund balance unless we've borrowed money to do it all. And I don't really think it's not been our motive or, or MO here lately, we trying to pay as we go kind of thing on that stuff. So we'll, we'll venture back into it, I'm sure, tomorrow.
Well, we could have a good starting point. Um, last year at budgeting. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for nonprofits and nobody applied because stipulations that was put on there. For capital expense or equipment replacement. Well, this could be a capital expense and that could be. A win for the market and for the town.
Exactly, okay, good point. Anybody got anything else on this before we? Move on? Hearing none? If you would step up to the mic, please, give us your name.
Okay, I'm Antoine Agnesio, I'm just a local beekeeper in Henderson County and. I, I know that you can offer bond issues in counties and municipalities to do such things. And I've been here thirty years and Mills River's agricultural, it's a good old place to live. And we're losing that flavor pretty rapidly and without thought about that, the future as well. You know, we farm a lot of land around here and we can't lose that. And we have the watershed for a lot of places and we can't lose that. So thinking in terms of. Forsyth for twenty forty, all when we're all along gone, fifty years out. You know, this has got to still be here because the water table is the, you know, it provides the water. We don't have it, this place disappears. And we have enough of that issue going around, around the country, excuse me. But anyway, a bond issue. Whatever that could be formulated at ten-year out, twenty-year out, for a long-term projection to provide financing. That might be part of the package, that's it.
Another good idea? Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on with our agenda. Hearing nothing? Sure, step up the mic.
I'm not sure where it fit into the agenda, I'm Betsy Campbell again. But I just wondered if we had made, if you all had in your plans anywhere for a swimming pool here at the park?
We've been asked by at least three elementary school kids. To install a swimming pool here at the park somewhere. The, I'm not gonna say it's never gonna happen. It's just that at this time, just the expense and believe it or not, if you get to doing investigating. It's almost impossible to find the lifeguards to service it. It's unbelievable. They, you know, when we grew up, every, there was, everybody wanted to be a lifeguard that could get certified. And now they can't pay them enough. I mean, they're paying them fifteen dollars an hour and they can't get enough to even run pools they got.
Well, COVID put a damper on a lot of that, I think, but I think that it should be. Considered in the recreation part of the park to have. Start planning for a swimming pool because the community needs it when you see how many people are just using the park and then they've got to go. Maybe to Brevard or maybe to Hendersonville or somewhere, we've got the people and with all these new homes that we have here in Hendersonville. And Mills River giving us tax money, it looks like we could start putting it on the agenda and planning for it.
Sandra made the comment at one point that we've got one of the cleanest rivers and a good access point. Okay, moving on, our audit contract fiscal year twenty twenty-three, Carl Shaw.
I'd like to say thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, y'all are welcome to stay or however y'all want to do it.
As, as you know, each year we have to have an audit, it's required by the state. Carl Shaw's been our auditor for many years. He not just works with staff, you know, at, for the audit, he's been providing support. What's before you is a proposed contract, it's boilerplate, also from the State Treasurer's Office. For an audit this year. We, we've had no complaints with his work, he's. Easy to work with, supportive, yet stays objective. So anyway, any questions, please?
So Sue, I'll admit, I did not go through and read all this. Is it, is there any difference in the contract we signed with Carl last year?
The only difference is the amount and the way it's presented. The, when they made the changes a few years ago that require oversight to his financial report. They now have to disclose that, so the price is broken into two pieces.
So would that be for? His oversight, the one that, because we have to hire the one that audits him.
I, I, I realize I made that confusing. He has to disclose, Carl has to disclose that he offers us support throughout the year. Outside of the audit and that's what the separate cost is for.
That's, that's the difference in the audit fee and then writing the financial statements. That was the same as last year, it just broke it, broke out into two.
Yes, and because we've got our ARPA funds and we're, we're getting more grants, it's getting more complicated, we have more funds. So the cost has gone up a little bit.
Basically, what we need is a motion to hire Carl Shaw. And his business to do our, all our financials and our audit. And, uh, for me to be able to sign it, it looks like, correct?
Yes.
Anybody got any questions about this?
Is this two separate motions because they're broken up or is it one?
I think it's good with this one on this one.
It, it, it's one for Carl's contract.
Okay, so it's two. I'll make a motion that we accept. Carl's contract for the. Coming year for the audit for the town.
And authorize me to sign it as well?
Yes.
In that motion? Okay, if you're good with that change, I need to look for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Jill. All in favor, well, any discussion? James, you good?
Do we have the, I've got one more question. Will the added fee or the extra? Let's call it writing financial statements, go away after the ARPA money is spent?
No, that is, it's actually to help staff. Some places, some municipalities have people on staff who are capable of writing those. Or they have enough people on staff that someone can be devoted to writing those. We are not in that position right now. So Carl does it for us.
Any other discussion? You got a first, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
The next item is a contract for Brian Broome, who is also an auditor. Because Carl writes our financial statements and because he offers assistance throughout the year. He is required to have someone review his final financial report to be sure that it's. Up to all of the standards, that it's what the State Treasurer's Office requires. And what the General Accounting Standards Board requires. And his contract has gone up a hundred dollars this year. This is our third year. That we're proposing to use him and he's, his first time he's gone up.
Any questions, discussion on this matter? Before we. Make a similar motion?
Mayor Gons, I'll move that we enter and we hire Brian as independent auditor.
Okay, do, I need to authorize me to sign it as well? But, okay, thanks. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Any discussion? All right, and all in favor?
I jumped the gun.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm about to jump you on that deal, I get it. Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, moving on, a reappointment of the planning board. Mr. Moore. Looks like it expires on four twenty-three of twenty-three.
So Mr. Moore has been on the planning board since twenty twenty, he also serves on the Board of Adjustment since twenty twenty-one. And he was just elected chair to the planning board on Tuesday night. I know you like to see things well ahead of time, so his term expires on April twenty-third.
All right, any discussions, questions about this?
Are you good with it, Dan?
Jeff, Jane, Randy, everybody?
Well, I will offer up that I believe Mr. Moore's been a tremendous resource, both for planning board and our staff. And I'm glad to hear that he's willing to seek reappointment, so while I'm in favor of it. Given that, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Moore. Given that, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Moore to the plan, uh, planning board.
All right, Jeff made the motion, second.
I'll second.
Sandra, second. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor? Got you for at least two more. Okay, eh, budget amendment ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-two.
Okay, um, you, you're not, you're not strangers to having budget amendments throughout the year. And after looking at, you know, at, at our, our books, I'm finding that there are some things we need to correct. Uh, one would be, and again, this is not an unusual one, the collections, text collections have exceeded expectations. Again, and, um, because of that, our payments to the fire department are over budget. So, um, I have estimated, hopefully we won't need to come back on this again. Tried to estimate what future collections will be through the end of the year. And, um, we have to appropriate from fund balance in order to cover that. There was one expense in, in an account, um, which was basically when we, when we purchased land, we, um, now I can't remember if it was a survey or what, but there was a professional. We paid a professional for our service and, um, it was in a different account from the others. So I'm basically moving money from the admin contingency to cover that. Cause we didn't, when we appropriated funds for the land, we did not, um, cover that one. And then, um, I'm trying to remember. Oh, yes, we, we bought, um, we approved improvements to the town hall building and we've bought cubicles and additional furniture for the conference room to allow for additional staff. So, um, it would bring your budget to, from five million six seventeen, five ten to five million seven forty-two, five ten.
Any questions to pursue on this?
Is the amended above the current or like on the uh, contingency twenty-one, one fifty, and then it's eighteen, one fifty, is that negative three thousand or like it went down three thousand? Or we spent eighteen thousand more dollars?
I, I have struggled to find a, um, an unconfusing way to present this. Um, so I, I understand your question. Basically what I'm doing is I'm reducing the budget on the contingency line item. So yes, it's going down. And that money is going into the line item for Hoop, for the Hooper land. Because that, that item did not have a budget and then we put something there. Yeah, I think it was a soil test, now that you say that.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Anything else? Hear none? With entertaining motion to um, approve this as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Senator James, all in favor? Sue, do you need me to sign this one or have you got one in there? All right, moving on to the, uh, Hickory Shelter update.
Mayor and council, earlier this week, we put together a timeline of the history of the Hickory Shelter, which was the new small shelter out by the basketball court. Uh, this was in response to some questions we got at our last meeting regarding the final payment for that shelter. Earlier this year, we did have some freezing issues with the new building, which were unexpected as we did request a, the design to include sufficient heat to prevent this from happening. That did not work. Um, we've been in contact with the design team as well as the, the contractor. And we brought in a third party to assess what the issues are. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go through and answer any questions that you might have specifically. Um, but I just think for the, for the purposes of the highlights, um, our next steps are to uh, sit down with the design team, the contractor and town staff and figure out um, the best course of action moving forward. And I've contacted your attorney about this and to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row. Um, but essentially what, what it sounds like is we missed in the design of the building. We had asked to be a four-season shelter. We missed in the final designs that it was not a four-season shelter. So that's on, that's on us. We requested a change order for them to remedy that. That change order was designed by the design team, reviewed by the contractor and approved by all parties and executed and completed. That design was not sufficient to prevent what happened from happening. And so our next step is to go back to the design team and tell them that their design did not work. And they need to come up with another way to make this work so that the building can remain open all year round, as was the original plan. Uh, this came about, we discovered it basically through the contractor was showing staff how to winterize the building, which threw up a red flag, obviously, because we didn't want to winterize the building. So uh, that's where we are right now and I'm happy to answer questions that council might have.
Has there been an estimate manual or repair of the damage that's been done?
Yes, it's three thousand six hundred dollars if I'm not mistaken.
Any other question?
Do we know what the cost of an adequate heating system would be or insulating with that building? So it would be year-round facility.
I don't know that we have that number. Do you know, please, we've seen them in the call?
No, I know they were working on it, but we have not gotten that information. Um, they do, they did come up with a plan though. Um, I think it's suggested of switching out the doors, changing the flood vents and then, um, upgrading the heaters in the facility.
So Daniel, we've already paid, I guess this was out of contingency of the building, seventy-two hundred dollars more than what they contracted.
The, no, the overall price of the building, I have to go back and look at.
What says the total addition of seventy-two hundred and those I polished for the town?
I can clarify there. We had some other change orders that were reductions. So overall, we paid less than the contracted price on the building due to some other changes. There was, um, when the building was spec, there were some really expensive fans, believe it or not, um, that were just far above what we needed. And so that was a change order that saved a whole lot. I think it was almost a twelve thousand dollar change in our favor. So when we did the change order to winterize the building, it, we still had an additional around three thousand dollars. And that, we didn't go over that contract price.
Well, later on, we also had to approve for fixtures and picnic tables and spickets, I believe it was. After they build it, whenever we're gonna get it finished, we added that to the dividend.
That was part of last year's budget.
It was separate from the construction budget.
So I guess on the August eighth line or August first through the eighth line here, it says discussions were had between architect and the contractor determining if they're four-season. And it turned out it was. So that's why I didn't want to sign them last year. We've suffered damage. Paying for, and we've already paid mostly for something that we thought we didn't get.
That's right.
So.
Did we sign it or not?
We did not.
But I would think that the design firm has been paid in full, correct?
There is one outstanding invoice for three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, something to that effect. That's very minimal.
So we're, we're potentially holding the contractor's check even though he executed to the design. That's the problem.
Well, it's, uh, that's true. They, they're, they are, they did complete work within their scope, but there were some additional things that they did that the town did not approve. And so that's, that's part of what we think is some of the issues going on right now. Uh, they didn't, the town didn't pay for those changes, but that is something they did that was outside their scope. So.
So would that be like the water pump?
Yes. That's right.
And the, the third-party plumber that looked at it said it was not.
So do you know when the group is gonna get together?
I do, I do not. As soon as, as soon as we're able to, we'll have to get this thing wrapped up.
Heard anything out of the contractor as far as that last check?
Uh, just that they want to know the status of it and I told them that we were still working on it. I'd be in touch.
So they're expecting it?
But they, they're aware of the issues that we're facing in that I've, I've told them we're not going to be paying them until this is addressed. I had that conversation a couple of weeks ago.
Are they saying they're gonna fix it?
Well, that's the conversation we have to have with, with the design team, because it's, they've done the work they were asked to do. It's, this is the design team that needs to come up with the answer for the freezing of the pipes. And then we determine if we want to work with the same group to, to complete those repairs or if we want to hire a different person coming to do that work.
Okay. Just keep us posted on that.
Absolutely.
Uh, moving on to staff updates, uh, tell what, when you get told it.
No further report tonight.
Uh, Ms. Taylor, tax collector?
Um, so you have your report from the, about the end of February? Year to date, February twenty-eight, we'd collected two point eight five five million dollars. Um, at that time, we had a little over fifty thousand dollars to collect, which is ninety-eight point two five percent of our levy. As of today, we have a little less than forty-five thousand dollars to collect. I have six parcels that are going to be turned over to the attorney, four, um, parcels that are going to be, have their bank accounts attached. Um, one property is going to be sold. If you want a lot in High Vista, it's going to be sold on the county courthouse steps on the twenty-third of March. And three parcels were disqualified from the present use value program in the last two weeks. And that's all I've got.
Okay. A big thank you to all that you and staff do to collect and the citizens of Mills River for being good patrons and paying as well. But ninety-eight, ninety-eight point one, is that what you said?
Ninety-eight point two five.
Ninety-eight point two five, yeah. It's awesome. Okay, Park's ready.
Uh, just real question. People break down two dates. So April first will be our brunch with the bunny. And you can find more information on our website, have sign up, great opportunity to get that family photo with the bunny and, um, a lot of breakfast for folks and, um, should be a really fun time, crafts, games, all that sort of fun stuff.
Is it a local bunny?
Is it a local bunny?
Don't know yet. Don't know. I'm just asking.
Um, and then also just save the date for Mills River Day on May sixth. So, um, that'll be a really great day. We got, uh, local vendors. We've got horse show, tractor pull, all that happened in at River Farms. Um, so definitely save the date, come out, um, go to the farm market first, because it is their opening day in the morning. When you're done there, hop on over to River Farms. Be a full, full day of celebrating all the awesome things in Mills River. And then just lastly, I want to reiterate what Laura said. I really want to thank you all for supporting, um, our grant for our, our playground. Um, there is, I think, forty-five applications from across the state and our project rank A highest, which is amazing. And it's gonna be a really great thing for this community and this park.
Absolutely. Thanks for all the hard work.
Do you know when they're gonna do the construction on that?
On the, well, we, we have to do it within two years for our project. So, uh, the next step from here is actually the governor still has to officially announce the awards, um, for that. And then we'll get a contract to save. Jeff probably knows how, how long some of those take sometimes to get, but once we get the contract, then we'll go through, uh, the design bid process. And my hope is by this time next year, we're really rocking and rolling on that project.
So that would be us doing money and then getting reimbursed.
Correct. It is a reimbursement. Yeah, it's a reimbursement rate.
Mr. Maltzer?
No update.
I'll save most of the updates for our visioning discussion in a moment, but I just did, did want to point out. In case you hadn't heard, Senator Moffat introduced Senate Bill two sixty-five today, which would extend municipal elections, um, to place elections in even numbered years. So for those of you who would be up for election this fall, Mr. Ross and Mr. Young, there's a chance that your term will be extended by a year to twenty twenty-four. And for the rest of you folks, it could be extended to twenty twenty-six. So depending upon your viewpoint, that could be a good or a bad thing or it could be, it could be indifference. But that, that was just introduced today, so we don't know the status of it. Um, but it is, it is, has been presented now. Just want to make you aware of that. That's all I have.
You okay? Yeah. Oh, yes. Okay, council comments. Any council comments? Anybody, anybody?
I'd like to tell Nicole that I hear nothing but praises about the park. Everybody says we enjoy bringing the dogs over here, walking the track. The kids playing down here. I'm forever seeing videos of them on Facebook. Um, people heard that we were gonna be doing a addition to down there. They want to quit, gonna sell the equipment we had. I said, no. Don't think so. I think we're adding to, we're not moving stuff around like that. But the park is really a good draw and a, a good sense of community for the town of Mills River.
Really me know, but I also just a big thank you to my staff. Um, you know, those guys on the mowers keeping this place clean and our restaurants clean. It's huge and it just creates such a great atmosphere in the community. It's amazing. So, I'm sure they're not watching, but they will.
And they're all, you know what the next movie is.
Uh, any more council comments? If not, we're gonna take us a little break before we go into our visioning process.
And congratulations to Jeff Moore for getting chairman of the planning board. Before your turn.
Okay, we're gonna take a five or ten minute break.